Our meeting to order at seven ten, sorry, eight ten. Sorry, because I didn't really review the agenda a lot. Hold on one second. Okay, sorry. All right, so a chance for public comments at the beginning of our meeting. I don't see anybody else on the line. Participants, no, there's no one else. Sean's on, Jamie's on. Obviously Rebecca's here in the audience.
I don't know if we want to move Robin over to a panelist, but we've got Robin and then Kevin Patrone is the other attendee that's in.
Oh, I'm sorry, the two attendees.
You're just trying to move this quickly and you're like.
No, 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 no. I just said just move Robin over to panelists.
All right, so Kevin, unless you have any questions, we'll move on. You're the only one in the audience. All right, obviously, the agenda tonight is primarily to discuss this one page that we received, our missive on Friday afternoon from the state, obviously threatening to take away what we had already approved at our last meeting. And then I think we need to decide what we're going to do here as far as dealing with some of the facilities upgrades that we have. I think if you don't mind, maybe I'll just start off really quick, just to make sure that we all kind of understand what we're dealing with here, because I've spent pretty much all of the past two days going through these numbers again and just trying to figure out, you know, really what is happening to us. So maybe I'll just give you guys a couple of quick facts, just to make sure that we're all on the same page here. Sorry, let me just pull up a couple pieces here that I put together. So the facts are, so if we were to keep our education spending flat from last year, okay, so not do anything, just do the exact same budget, not increase it to 3.9 percent that we've decided to increase it this year, which is obviously based primarily on the three years of the teacher contracts, the health care and whatnot. But if you just were to keep it flat, our tax rate is going to go up by 29 percent. Okay, without any other increases, and actually it could be about 33 percent based on the new base rate that this state has since updated us with. If you include the expenditures, that number jumps to 36 percent, and I think it could be actually 40 percent if you include the new base rate. Okay, so we're talking, you know, and this is just from.
When you say include the expenditures, you mean what we already approved?
Right.
Okay.
3.9, not the excess, not the facilities, but just our baby call. I think we should keep that clear tonight, that we have our base budget that was the 3.9 percent, which is what we've been, that budget has not changed now for, gosh, I think, like, two months. That's been, that's been the number.
Okay, thank you.
Now, again, if we want to keep the rate flat, presuming we had an identical budget to last year, we have to cut 3.1 million. If we wanted to keep the rate flat based on our current budget, which is really what we would have to cut, because it's with the existing heads and the salaries and whatnot, we got to cut 3.8 million. So, and the other number that I calculated today too, if we wanted to cut so that we had the same tax rate increase as what the rest of Vermont has on average, which was back, you may remember, but we got a letter from the Commissioner of Taxes just before Thanksgiving, I believe, that was talking about an 18 percent, almost a 20 percent increase, so it was 18.5 percent across the state. If we wanted to make our tax rate increase 18.8 percent like everyone else, we'd have to cut 2.2 million out of our budget. And then I started going back and saying, okay, how are we going to cut, let's even just cut something. So the only way we can cut really is to start reducing class sizes and laying people off.
Increasing class sizes.
Increasing class sizes. So if we were to revise our sections, to get all the sections to basically be in line with the state statutes, which are 20 kids an average are fewer than 20 kids for K through three, and shall average fewer than 25 through four through 12, we would only be able to cut three sections at Marion Cross. So that means only cutting three teachers, which on the average cost, if you look at our budget and divide it by the full-time regular ed teachers, it's about 116,000, and that includes all the other textbooks. It's way overstated. You're talking 350 grand. Now, if we wanted to cut even more, which basically would mean cutting everyone's classes to one section, so our average class size would be 42 kids, we could cut 12 teachers, which would be 1.4 million. So we're halfway to 2.2 to get to the 18. We're nowhere near the 3.8. So I think the point here is, is that, I mean, again, I've spent the past two days thinking through this, and I mean, I know we've got, the state thinks we just have a bunch of rich white kids in Norwich, but like, increasing class sizes to 42 kids to be able to get our budget down doesn't seem like, there's something wrong with the formula, that we're not, there's something wrong with the formula, the new waiting's formula, the fact that our taxes are going up by 40, 30 to 40 percent. I don't know what it is. I think next, you know, so that's that fact. I think the second thing, so I have sent some emails. You know, Rebecca's kindly come to join us tonight too, to give us some insights on, you know, what's going on. I mean, I have sent, just so people are aware, that I've sent some emails to the V S B A, to, to, who's the, Emily?
Representative Cornheiser.
Cornheiser. And I'll just redo that as well, just because I think this is kind of where I'm coming from at the moment, so. You know, I wrote that, as you all may know, I'm currently the Chair of the Norwich School Board. I've been on the school board for four years and am due to run for another two-year term in March. I said, being on the school board is a big reason why I've spent so much of time, my time, trying to brainstorm additional sources of tax revenue for the state of Vermont. I said, given the dire financial situation at the state level, and the fact that Norwich is facing a 36 percent tax rate increase, I'm hesitant to continue on the select board. I cannot imagine receiving the blowback from the town residents starting next year. I said, this is particularly true as the state has put the town in an impossible situation. There's no way for Norwich to cut our way out of this. We would need to cut 3.8 million or seven, out of our elementary school budget. And then I, you know, talked about the fact that even if we were to cut a million, it would result in a massive teacher layoffs, about 10 teachers, reducing our staff by about a third, doubling most class sizes, a little above the state statutes. And this type of cut, presuming that we're even allowed to do that, will put bound the change of school. I think that the 5 percent cap, I think we have to remember that this is a bit of a misnomer. It simply delays the inevitable. And because it's calculated before the C L A, Norwich is still facing a 16 percent tax rate increase this year, even with the cap. This after growing our total educational expenditures an average of only 4 percent over the past six years, which is really important for us to keep in mind here as we're thinking about cutting this budget further. And only, including only 3.9 percent this year, right, despite the impact of three years' worth of our teacher contracts and settlements. In fact, our per pupil spending this year is flat, right? It's up $2. The other half of our budget is Dresden, the Hanover High and Richmond Middle School, which for which we as Norwich School Board have zero ability to cut, given Norwich does not have the Dresden School Board votes. Hanover residents meanwhile are looking at a 2.6 percent tax increase this year. Unfortunately, I moved to Norwich 10 years ago. There are about a dozen classmates from Tuck Dartmouth Business School, who also called Norwich home. Fast forward today, but all but two have left. Vermont's broken fiscal situation has made them realize that the incentive sustained in Vermont are being erased. Soon it makes zero sense to live here. I was hoping that something could be done in the 11th hour to allow for a more reasonable implementation of Act 127. But looking at the staggering tax rate increase we're facing and zero ability to help our school residents, I do not believe there's positive future for Norwich. So I apologize for, you know, starting this off, I do applaud the efforts of the legislature for trying to, you know, make the education of, or, you know, prioritize the education of the children here in Vermont, but I think it's become abundantly clear that Vermont does not have the financial resources to achieve every goal it's desired. So I think from here, we can, that those are kind of my statements. I just wanted to make sure that we were all clear with our facts and numbers. As we know, tonight, whatever we decide to add to the budget is not going to change our tax rate, I think. Maybe I can turn it over to Neil. I think at this point, we really are making a decision as far as making the state representatives happy and not annoying them, because I think the fear that we all have is that if we play by the rules, which they had given us last time, that they're likely, it sounds like they're threatened to cut the 5 percent cap next year through legislative process, which would obviously be somewhat devastating to us, although I'm a little bit like, I guess I'm already giving the calculations figuring that our taxes are going up by 30, 36 to 40 percent anyways. So I don't know if that really makes a big deal to me. I have reached out to Jay as well, asking for, and again, I think we should talk tonight if we want to add some legal fees into the budget a bit, because I would like, I think we should have Leopold look at the Dresden-Norwich compact and just see if there's something in there. I do think the one question unfortunate, Jamie, maybe I'll ask you this question. Is there a way for us to calculate how much taxes we generate in Norwich, including income sensitivity? Because I have, on one hand, we keep talking about the fact that we have no poverty, but I also read emails that the majority of residents in both Thetford and Hanover pay through income sensitivity. So.
Thetford, Norwich?
I'm sorry, Thetford, Norwich. So that kind of like doesn't balance to me, and I don't know, it's really hard to think about how this all works, because we have no idea how much taxes we actually generate, because we have no idea who pays how much we pay through income sensitivity and what that is, but I don't want to take the meeting off a track, that it's just hard to make these decisions about whether we start looking at the compact and other ways to get around this at some point. But anyways, that's, maybe we can put that aside for a few minutes and then.
I think it was Rebecca's email that had the majority of Norwich residents paying for income sensitivity, so hopefully there's the citation that can follow.
Yeah, Rebecca?
Rebecca Holcombe, resident of Norwich, and also your local state representative. That Norwich one, they have been in error. I think we may be below that now. It is, I think, you read the square number, I think it's closer to 46. Thetford is over. And I think what you're talking about is the difference between horizontal equity across districts and vertical equity within districts. And the challenge here is that any additional tax burden here, even though people are income sensitive, they're not, they're not unaffected by this as well.
So I guess, oh, yes.
Sorry, just before we kind of get in this discussion about this, a quick, if you could just have a quick clarifying question about what you wanted to see Leopold about regarding the compact?
Again, this wasn't really part of the agenda, but I just want to let people know that I also sent, just so everyone's aware, I sent this to Jay, because we had talked about this. So there is Section H of the contract that specifically says that no state will pass any legislation that negatively affects the stakeholders of the other state or the residents. It's a little unclear, but I will say, and again, getting my card to come to the Dresden meeting tonight, two things. I mean, one is, is looking at our budget, we are going to negatively impact the Dresden budget for the foreseeable future. I mean, I don't know how we can approve middle school sports. I don't know how, I don't think we can approve any sort of building over here. It might be out of our control, but like, again, maybe I'm just being negative, but like, we really can't, and then even the last meeting, right, where we were approving the paydown of the debt, we basically convinced our Dresden board members to hold off on that so that we could do more on the facility side of Norwich and look where we are. Like, we didn't pay that debt down ahead of time, which was the correct thing to do for the district, I think, I think personally. It was the correct thing to do, is to pay that down early, because we had, everyone had the means to do it. Dresden was trying to do it. So that's just an example. Where Norwich, I think, actually negatively now impacted the school district because of this legislation, but Michael?
So a couple thoughts. In reading the letter from the Chair of Ways and Means and Senate Finance, I don't, just speaking for myself, I don't believe my role as a school board member in Norwich is to protect state legislators from the predictable consequences of Act 127. I'm also not here to willfully diminish the excellence of our own school district or the combined school district. If the state wants to pull our district apart, it should do it. And so we should approve an entirely reasonable budget, which we have, including maintenance that has to be done. And if they want to bring us in front of a reimagined tax rate review committee, let's do it. I'm not generally a hothead. I am not generally here to punch people. I realize when you're saying that, you're kind of being a little bit of a hothead, right?
You're saying calmly.
I simply can't look at our budget and say that this is an unreasonable approach. I can't look at the budgets that I've seen as a spectator the last few years, as someone who's kept an eye on the school board, and think that we are being profligate spenders in trying to take advantage of the system. We are simply playing within the rules that General Assembly gave us. I also am not convinced, the Representative Holcombe and others would have to try to convince me otherwise, that if we dialed down our spending, the five-year cap would persist. I just like, oh, well, Norwich is going to reduce its spending. Okay, the five-year cap stays here. You know what I mean? I just don't, that but-for reasoning, I'm not there yet. And so I just think our obligation is to make the best decisions we can make. And if there are consequences to that, we'll navigate those too. But I'd rather stand in front of our neighbors and say, hey, this is what we did. And now the state's doing what it's going to do, and deal with the fallout of that, than start to pull apart the school district in service of trying to mitigate the consequences of Act 127.
Just want to make sure that, based upon what Michael just said, and I'm actually 100 percent behind you based upon what I'm getting ready to say. From my reading of the letter, and I just want to clarify, I'm kind of looking at Neil and Rebecca in particular. It feels as if the consequence of us keeping the budget that we passed is that we might be put in front of this, I forget how they phrased it, but this trial, this committee, this tribunal, use Hunger Games, no, just kidding. Using Hunger Games imagery, this tribunal to justify our budget. Is that the only, I mean, that's the only consequence that I've read in that letter, is that, am I?
Yeah, let me just, and just so Rebecca's crystal clear on this too, so the budget, what we're talking about, so everyone's on the same page here. The budget that we voted on last meeting, we'll call it our base budget, that had all of the expenditures in there for the Marion Cross in Dresden, but for Marion Cross, it was the 3.7 million, it was a 3.9 percent increase. Really had no budget at all in there, other than the ongoing, like, 100,000, and Jamie, can you correct me if I'm wrong, for some maintenance and facilities and stuff around the buildings? It had nothing in there extra for any sort of facilities planning. Now, this is, the issue is, is that we have been taught, and again, the letter, the reason I'm bringing this up, because the letter keeps saying, this is not the time for deferred maintenance. All of the things that we were, are going to spend, we have option, we had, Jamie has us for four different options, one, two, three, four, five, going from a million and a half all the way up to 10 million if you want to do heat pumps. All of these projects, we were basically waiting on so that when Dresden debt rolled off, we could start doing some of these projects, right? We wanted to get the playground in, which was a small, it wasn't a huge thing. We've got the Septic, and now, of course, these are projects that are really addressing some fairly serious things, but they're not, we don't have to do them right away, but I mean, other than Jamie has to get that oil tank out of the ground. But the idea was, is let's start moving down with some, you know, very, trying to make some very serious efforts to cut our admissions from the school. I think we talked about trying to go all the way to heat pumps, and that's just not reasonable, but even what we're doing, the LED lights, the new roof, all the new boiler systems, getting rid of the old steam boiler, the winter, the weatherization, I mean, there was a total of about 2.5 million. We would have been, I think, if we, if it wasn't for Act 127, we would be, I think, going down the path, I'm almost positive, of passing a warrant article to go after Option 3, which was 2.5. I'm pretty sure that we would all be going maybe with or without the solar, right? But again, that's around here, a couple hundred grand. But that's what we're really deciding on tonight, is it's the 1.425 that we had stacked in there. If we take that out, I think that's what the state wants us to do, is just take that out, the rest of the budget. Again, it's unclear to me if they want us to semi-take the budget down further, so that's, because even with the cap, right, the fact that our tax is going up 17 percent, by definition, because it's a 5 percent increase, we are, the state's still having to pay for some of our, right? We are still not paying our total tax base. And again, the income sensitivity, unfortunately, you can't do these calculations, because I have no idea how much tax we actually generate because of income sensitivity, but I believe, so I think this whole conversation is around the 1.425 facilities upgrades, and the whole idea behind that was, at least for me, it made me feel a little bit better about being able to sell a 36 to 40 percent tax increase to our town, because these things are going to have to do, and I don't know, if we don't get these done now, we won't, we will never do these. So anyways, everyone's got their hand, I'll stop speaking, because at this point, I think you guys all know my opinions here, and I've tried to present the facts.
I'm going to go ahead and say, I think you're selling beyond the close at this point. I wholeheartedly agree with what Michael has said and Lisa has said, so I don't know what else you want to discuss. Other than you want to discuss strategy, that's fine, but I think that we as a board, or at least.
So I think that, so the thing that I think, you know, Neil or Rebecca can also say this, is I think I originally had the exact same reaction, Neil can say this to you. I mean, when I talked to Neil about this over the weekend, I had that, I had, that was my initial reaction too. The flip side is, is that it seems like the state is very serious about trying to get all the towns to pull back on this to, basically, I think we would approve a much smaller thing, put it into a 10- or 20-year bond, and obviously not get very much benefit from the system, but create goodwill with the state. You know, the question is, is if everyone doesn't do this, and we're the only ones that do this, then we've really screwed ourselves. I created it, it's Hunger Games. Neil, you've been patiently waiting.
Yeah, so I think to start with, right, so we can't, I can't underemphasize the challenging position that we all are in at this moment in time trying to make a decision on this. To just emphasize something that Garrett just pointed out, right? I don't think the discussion here tonight is changing the base budget. The base budget was going to trip that 5% cap regardless, and it had to do with the change in the equalized pupils, which we all knew was coming, right? If we did one thing right, it was our forecasts were fairly spot on about a 20% increase. What we can though consider tonight was the additional 1.425 that we added to things. And while I am, I do not disagree in the least with what Michael said, I have a little bit of a different perspective on things. And that is, is that if I'm looking at what's going on right now at the legislative level, I am fairly certain that something about this law is going to change, right? And it's that uncertainty that bothers me, right? And it's, it's knowing that I, this body, the five of us right here, right now, are responsible or about to be responsible for the single largest tax obligation in our community, right? And I want to make sure that we're being thoughtful about that when we make the decision on what to do with our spending. We keep the 1.42, so this goes to the sort of the four options that were listed in the attachment that we added into the agenda tonight.
If you haven't read that, I don't know if you want to read it, the Latin, it's in post in Board Docs.
Yeah, we already, yeah.
It's a great summary of the options Neil worked on a lot, so.
Yeah, and so, you know, I'm, I want to be very careful, right? Because I do believe that there's a certain aspect of how we decide to handle things tonight will be viewed by those that can actually change the levers in this law to make future us either happier or unhappier, right, in either direction. I also want to acknowledge that just the nature of our system means that we, collective we, all school boards in the state, we're all in this together. What we do here locally impacts what our neighbors in Thetford, Hartford, you know, you name it, all the way up into Chittenden County and beyond, what they see as well too, right? Which is part of the reason why, if you were paying attention, they had already revised that yield number down from when it was originally forecast in the tax letter. And that was based on the increased spending that they were sort of getting a whiff that school districts were entertaining. I will also acknowledge though, in the same time, that as I ran the numbers for Norwich potential future, things are looking pretty grim. And if we didn't address some of those facilities needs now, our ability to address them in the future goes away potentially. At a high level, I will tell you that my estimates, rather conservative in nature, show that property taxes will increase by about 109% over the next five years. So you can consider that the amount of tax that you pay on your property is going to just a little bit more than double in the next five years, based on my current estimates. That's simply not sustainable for the town of Norwich. We could essentially just get a pencil out and erase the town from the state of Vermont because I'm not sure they would continue to be able to exist in the function that it's existing in right now. But I think one of the potential benefits of Norwich being neighborly and maybe deferring the additional spending is providing us then with the opportunity to engage in a discussion with our colleagues in the legislature that the implementation of this act has, we're seeing is failing us. And I think it's failing not just Norwich, but it's also failing those other districts that were scheduled to see some tax capacity increases through all of this. It's just not working out the way that it is intended to, and it needs to be changed. And so I might be leaning towards not including the additional spending in the hopes that we've generated ourselves a platform for continued discussion on how do we make this better for Norwich? Because if we do nothing, if nothing in the law changes, yeah, you're looking at a tax rate going from just over $2 to just over $4 in five years. And I believe that that's simply not sustainable, I believe it's a flaw in 127 that really needs to get addressed. And we are the town to make that case, right? There are some other towns in the state that are feeling similar pain, but not to the extent that we are. And while we may have a perception of being perceived, a perception of being a wealthy town, not everybody in this town is wealthy, I've got neighbors on either side of me for whom this would be a big effing deal. And I want to make sure that our voice is heard in Montpelier as we try to work through a solution to this thing, because right now, I think it's busted.
And that's my biggest, I mean, unfortunately, the numbers here are just, I mean, I don't know, the 100% now, you've got me, I mean, even the 40%, I mean, we're talking, you know, on a 10,000, a half million dollar house, a $10,000 tax bill is suddenly going to turn into 14 or 15,000. And if, and it's going to, if it's going to double, we're talking a $500,000 house right now is going to have, in a couple of years, a $20,000 tax bill, right, for a half million dollar house. And we also have to get over, I mean, I did the numbers too, just so you guys are aware too, like, the tax rates today at the 67.5% cap, after the reassessment, it's going to be the same. The way people have to think about this, I'm going off a little bit of a tangent here, but think about what your house should be worth if you were to list it today. Multiply it by 0.675 and I'll bet you that is your assessed value. I did the math and it's about, it's pretty much about close. And again, then what you're looking at here, which is even more worrisome unfortunately is, is that, you know, whether you're looking at 2.31, 2.71, I mean, Neil, if you're talking four bucks, you're going to move the decimal point over one, right, to make it equivalent to Hanover. Hanover is at 17 and a half dollars. So if we're going to be at, after this is all done here, close to, close to $30, right, like 10 minutes away.
Right, which is, sorry, and I just, I'll stop, but which is why I, we, we need to generate the environment and the opportunity to have a seat at the table for fixing this.
Go ahead, sorry.
No problem at all. Okay, so to clarify, my original question is the, so, okay. We're not going to touch the 3.9% budget, so we're only talking about the additional facilities, okay? So my original question was, this letter implies that if we were to go ahead and do what we had voted, you know, what we were planning to do for the facilities, we would be called in front of this committee to discuss why we did it. But it also sounds as if we might be held up as an example of how people manipulate the system and how things go awry, which would not be good for Norwich or Vermont or anyone. Like it just, that, that feels like a bad path to go down. So there's that, that's a second consequence in addition to just being called in front of this committee. But my concern is, from, at least what I heard at our last meeting from Jamie and Tony, is that there are some facility things that need to be taken care of now. And that if we wait three to four years, it will be more expensive to fix a roof if it's broken than it will be to fix it before it's broken. It will, you know, the, the oil tank has to come up. If the oil tank's coming up, we've got some sunk costs in getting that oil tank up that maybe we could do some other things. If we replace all the LED, all the lights with LED, we will actually save some money. So it feels as if there are some things, facilities wise, that I too, I was, I am trained to be cooperative and collaborative rather than the other way around, and I prefer that. And I would prefer to place this in a position where we have a seat at the table and we can help fix this and this can all happen. I want, that is a goal of mine. And I also don't want for the school to have a problem that we can't fix because we don't have money, because we didn't spend money in advance. And so that's my concern, is I just, I heard, I heard a plea from the facilities people to do at least something. You know, we all agree that it would be great to do, you know, the most environmentally conscious thing and, you know, go geothermal and save money in the long run, but we can't do that. So we were backing things off. But I, I guess I hesitate to back us off to zero from, like, if Option Five was the Cadillac and we settled for Option Three, which is the Honda, I don't necessarily want us to, you know, to back us to the Chevy Nova, which never really worked. Because, yeah, so that's my concern. So I guess I just want to make sure that that's part of the discussion as well, is if we back it off, what do we back it off to? Do we back it off to zero or do we just say, because we could justify it in front of this commission, look, we were going to spend 1.4, you know, we thought about spending 2.6 or whatever it was, we backed it off to 1.4 based upon what you all were seeing for the state, we wanted, we want to cooperate and we want the state to be in a good place. So we backed off our facility spending to, I'm just going to throw out a number, 600,000, I have no idea what it would be, but we couldn't go to zero. And I just am wondering if that could be part of this conversation too.
Let me just address your thing, Lisa, and I know, actually Jamie, I'm sorry you have your hand, I don't know if you've had your hand up for hours, but you're probably, chop me in the pit here. Part of the thing is, I think unfortunately, is Board Docs not have Jamie's analysis? Do you guys see her? So to answer your question.
Yeah.
So I'm just going to talk, okay? So, hi. So Garrett, to your question, I just barely posted it because I was holding off today. Okay, because, because there were so many pieces in motion, okay? But what Garrett was asking and what you're saying, Lisa, and my plea to the board is this, we already ran forward and filed documents with a septic plan with taking that oil tank out and not putting it back in the ground. So I redid a number, a scenario two light, if you will, and I have posted it, if you want to refresh. I posted it because I didn't want to make anything wrong, I posted it in the administrative section. And my suggestion, which I hope, I'm listening to everybody and I totally get the, oh my God, part of it. And I totally get that we need to set an example. I'm hoping that we could look at this scenario two light that will at least get us in our HVAC to where we need to be. And if we did it as a, as a lease for 10 years at 2%, it would make our payment, it would fit into, we're going to be over five, there's nothing we can do about that, okay? And those are, those are because they keep playing with numbers. I'm sorry, every time they lower the yield, it's going to make more people hit the 5% cap. It's a screwed up person. But anyway, it would make a payment like below 100,000 with the offsetting savings and we could at least get our boiler plants to where we need them to be.
Yeah, so I'm still not seeing on Board Docs, but with Jamie, with Jamie, I believe, why am I not seeing this?
Yeah, it is there now.
It's there.
It's in administrative content.
But Jamie put this here, and again, we were calling it, and Jamie, I had sent her an email this afternoon and we called it, basically this is Option Two Light, so this is basically Option Two minus the LED lights. What it really, and Jamie, I don't know if you have my email, but I think adding the LED lights almost because of the savings, the projected savings, I think it changes the, I think it changes the overall cost by like $500 for the year. Anyways, that might be a discussion for a minute from now. I think what Option Two Light does is it takes, it's not addressing the roof, there's no solar, there's no code updates. It is just, it's removing the tank, the oil tank, it's installing the LP tank, and then it's basically doing all the boiler work, which is going to, you know, be a fairly substantial carbon savings. Because I think to Jamie's point, going with Option One, which was basically converting our existing boros from oil to LP and still dealing with the steam, I mean, this is the type of thing where I think, Act 127 aside, we would be going down the road, I think, of Option Three, which was also replacing the roof, because by the way, that is the only thing that came back, is the most pressing need in our facilities study that was done, now twice, right? So Jamie, I don't know, and again, so, and I'm kind of, maybe I, so maybe we keep the question there before we start talking about which option, how we finance it, whether we do 10 years, 20, but I think the question immediately on the table is, is do we just go guns a blazing and keep the 1.425 number in there figuring that, you know what, like now's the time and if we don't do it now, it's going to be never, or do we move down this road, which I think is, I think we, no matter what, that Vermont can't come back at us and say, hey, guys, like you're now, you're still baking your budget when at the end of the day, these things are in here, we're never answering them correctly, they're only adding 100 and, what's Jamie's number here, 100 and somewhat thousand to the annual budget. So I think the question to answer, sorry, long-winded way of saying, Lisa, we're not, we're not just walking away from this, it's just that we would be financing it over many years. We're not obviously taking advantage of the system, which is what Neil's concern is, and now, sorry, Michael.
And I apologize for asking, not seeing this, but I was traveling all day, so I, I didn't see anything.
It was just loaded, Jamie was unfortunately trying to do this this afternoon because again, Jamie's been working overtime and this is why these things also just make me so, I just go red with the state because it impacts all of us, because we're, we're sitting here tonight, Jamie's rewriting this again, I mean.
So I guess, I guess the question is, the two consequences are, one, you could be hauled in front of a tax rate review committee, and two, Neil, saying there could be a consequence of, well, three, the second consequence is they could change the law. And in between those two, Neil's saying you could undercut the negotiating position of affected towns because of this spending, right? Come to the negotiation and say, look, we did everything we could, right? And I guess the question I have for Representative Holcomb is, what is your sense of it? Or what is your sense of the negotiation that may happen to adjust Act 127 in Norwich's favors? Like, is there any sort of possibility that if we do not pass facility spending, that that will lead to some sort of favorable adjustment of 127? For at least the avoidance of consequences of taking away the 5% cap in 127? What's your read of the situation?
So I need to be very clear, I don't speak for the legislature and I'm one of many, many people, so I can.
Ask for a read, not.
I want to be really clear on that. And I think I need to first apologize because I think there is something wrong in what's happening, but I also feel that there is a perfect storm. So we're focusing a lot today on 127. There are several other things that are coming to a head right now that are also driving up tax rates that are not 127. And so I need to acknowledge the intent was to make it possible for other communities to provide facilities comparable to what we do. There are several other, I would say, failures of state level leadership that are driving everything to a head at the same time. And I think Neil, you've mentioned some of them, but it's the PCB mitigation, it's years of unfunded liabilities related to infrastructure, it's healthcare costs that have been increasing in double digits year after year. We could go on and you all know them. So I also think the second problem is the inability to plan more than a year at a time, and that is a cost in and of itself. And when I look at the specific investments that you are trying to make, those are the kinds of investments that yield long-term sustainability. So I think you have to be clear about the fact that you, that additional item is designed to reduce your tax effect over the long haul. And I think we've made mistakes and that, you know, I know, and I don't know quite why they picked this transition language because this was a language of Act 46 that similarly led to a spike. And these kinds of short-term mechanisms often don't work for the exact reasons that many people have described here. So I think you're kind of in an impossible position. You've talked about the yield, the reality is you have given your best guess on what people will be paying on their tax bills. They're going to vote on your best guess and no one will know what the actual bill is until the legislature closes the session out. Because that yield and that tax rate at the state level, the average is going to bounce from here until the end of the semester. So I just want to acknowledge the volatility. You are trying to make good decisions and hold a steady course in the most unpredictable You are trying to make good decisions and hold a steady course in the most unpredictable and volatile time thing I've ever seen in my entire career in public education. So I want to acknowledge that right out of the gate. I think, I think that it will help this community, that yours was one of the first communities to acknowledge the responsibility to treat all children as Vermont children and not just the children in our own town. And so the fact that you did that early and loud and you've continued to say that, I think has to count for something. I don't hear anyone saying that children who live in other places should suffer and we shouldn't. I think that the fact that what you're talking about is spending that is designed to reduce long-term costs is a good thing. I think this formula is going to change. I don't think this formula is going to survive in its current form. And I did do some poking around today. And when the people who authored the report behind Act 126 submitted their proposals to the legislature, the legislature picked up the weights and stuck them into the existing formula. The recommendation was actually to shift the state from the kind of formula that we currently have to a foundation-based plan. And you cannot, you cannot turbocharge an existing formula that's already struggling and not expect some unintended consequences. And I think part of the challenge we have right now is that not only can no one explain what's happening and why, and it really doesn't matter what community you go to, I'm seeing people in the Northeast Kingdom who should have been strong beneficiaries, who are not benefiting from this change, and they can't even tell our communities why. So that's one piece of it. But the other thing is, the outcome of the decisions you make does, no, no longer seems to be connected to the decision you make. And when you have that degree of, I don't know what the word is, Neil, you probably have one.
Disconnect.
Disconnect. I, I think the, the system begins to lose its credibility and it begins to behave in unpredictable ways. And I think that's where we are. So I think what you have to stay on is your responsibility to be as fiscally responsible as possible while providing for the needs of your community. Acknowledge the needs, given the extraordinary year we're in, where we truly have an extraordinary bump in education spending. The other big thing is the dry, dry up of ESR dollars and ARPA dollars. And despite being told, do not, do not spend ESR and ARPA on, you know, continuing costs, a lot of people did. And they're now trying to make those one-time expenditures, full-time expenditures, and that's a lot of the increase right now, I think as well. While this transition sugars out, I think you've got to try to hold, to the extent you can, the steadyest hours you can, well, also where you can, thinking about the small ways to, to soften the hit on the state as a whole. I think you need to engage. There is a hearing on Thursday. I've tried to connect both the chair and Neil to, to the committees so that they can testify. And I think we need to be continuing to have this conversation. So I wish I could say, I will tell you that we didn't even know the letter was going out until after, but now. I can tell you that even though the review committee for the 5% hits was, there's been no guidance from the agency of ed over the original review committee, so we don't even know what that was supposed to be. And there is been absolutely no discussion, and we can't get any information on the new tax rate jail that's coming out. So I don't know. I don't know that anyone has a clue for that. I don't even know if they have capacity at the state to review all the budgets that may get in that way. So I think there are a lot of unintended consequences here. The other thing no one's talked about is if people do make the cuts that some people are talking about, we're a tiny disre- really. You know, if you're looking at South Burlington, they're looking at 100 people, not Mansfield, 100 people. How many teachers do we cut before we also get the pension plan in trouble as well? So I think there's a lot of things coming out at the same time that are going to make it important for the state to rein this in this funding form and make sure it's adequately accounted for those implications. I wish I could offer you better news. I don't have it.
And I appreciate you chatting with us, but you know, I'm putting you on the spot.
No, it's fine. I do think we're going to have to look at a different educational model.
I mean, I think that, so again, I've, I have, I should be doing my work during the past two days and I've been only doing this. And I think that after running these spreadsheets and trying to figure out how do we, how do we even cut this, I can only conclude that the education formula is flawed. Because if, in order to cut it back so that we're only, we're even getting down to a 20% increase from this and then we have to increase class sizes to 45, like, I sent a note to Jamie today, I'm like, are we sure that we're actually, because I've seen some towns that have done an audit of their students to actually get more students that, you know, they've actually somehow gone through and I, that email I sent you guys today. Somehow these towns are, I guess, looking at their student body and actually figuring out, maybe we have more poverty or more, I'm not sure the second.
But I think it's important, I think the other thing is, and to that end, and what we're buying when we do that, a lot of it is social services. And I think a core flaw in this formula is the incentive it creates to caution from state social services into the education. And I am all in on supporting children who need a fair chance. I've got someone in my own background. If people hadn't helped my family out, I would not be here today. However, the state has a failing mental health system that is systematically underfunded and those costs are falling back into the education fund, which is the parapersonal. We cannot have school districts alone solve all the problems of poverty. And to have school districts pick up all those costs isn't even an efficient way to treat poverty. So I think there's a bigger conversation here about the porosity between the education fund and the state budget and how, you know, is this actually the right way to crack this nut? So I think we have to have that too. There's been a lot of caution into education from other arenas.
So to add this nine, I didn't really, when I signed up to be chair, I didn't really sign up to try to run meetings like this, frankly. Because, I mean, it's just so complex. I think, Lisa, you have one?
Add a question from Rebecca and kind of Neil, based upon what, what she just said, hopefully pretty fast. So one of the most disturbing things I've just heard is what Rebecca just said, which is that there are districts in the Northeast Kingdom who are supposed to be benefiting from this, who are not. I mean, when we voted, what was it, three years ago, Neil, to support? I mean, we as a board took a vote to support the state of Vermont moving towards helping all kids have a good education in the state of Vermont. I mean, we, we all voted for that. We supported it even though we knew that Norwich would take a quote unquote hit of some sort monetarily and tax-wise. But we did that because I think everybody at the table then believed that that was the right thing to do. And I, and again, I think we still do. I am disturbed that if we're hurting as one of the wealthier towns and the towns that are supposed to be benefiting are also hurting, this feels like it is failing on every level. I mean, I, I, I guess I'd be more inclined to take a, you know, to, to absorb pain if I thought that it was actually benefiting people who are, who we hope would benefit from it. So that said, is there a way? And this is kind of a Neil and Rebecca question, I think, with you as, in your role as a school board association person. Can we start to work together, the town, I mean, like, not just the wealthier towns being upset, but like, all the districts being upset? And, and just saying, this is, this is failing completely. It doesn't help us with this decision right now, but it does help us get to kind of Neil's point of getting a seat at the table and fixing this in a way that it's fixed. And I, I would wholeheartedly echo what Rebecca just said, is that school districts are being asked to do jobs that they were not designed to do and could be designed to do, but it would take a heck of a lot more money and expertise than teachers currently have to be able to do that. So I think we need to be careful about all of this. Again, it doesn't get us to what we should do tonight, but I just, I, I want to honor both what Rebecca and Neil said about, let's figure out how to fix this too.
So I think tonight, so I think that the, right now, just to kind of keep us on track here, I think is, let's talk about, I guess, you know, I think, do we want to go full on and keep the 1.425 in and just say, you know what, we don't trust the system? We don't trust the legislatures. We're not going to have a seat at the table, even if we're good actors here. Or do we want to, I think that, I think option B is, is to, you know, do the financing, do, you know, either Jamie's route, maybe we end up, we can talk about, I think this would be the next discussion on the table here in a few minutes, is whether we do option B light, whether we add the LEDs in, and then whether we do a 10-year versus a 20-year. I think those are the two, those are really the two decisions on the table tonight, unless anyone has a third option. But in my mind at least, it's either, again, just act in our sole best interest. I have to, I mean, we have been jumping up and down now with, I mean, I know Neil's been on a bunch of calls, I've been on calls. Unfortunately, when I have been talking about the fact that how can even Norwich afford a 30 to 40% tax rate increase? I've seen the, the response from most of the folks that I'm on the call and some of our previous representatives or existing representatives just kind of look at you and, you know what, you guys have tons of money, I don't, you know, sorry, this is the way it worked out, but I'm sure you'll figure out a way. I mean, it's, I have not gotten a lot of warm and fuzzies from the state folks, because we unfortunately are, we are so far off the roadmap as far as how high our taxes are compared to everyone else. I'm not sure if anyone else cares, to your point, Michael. I, I, I really don't know if they care. But I am coming around to the fact that, listen, if we are, if we are going to be here for the next 200 years as a town in Vermont, and now is probably the time to at least make a goodwill effort. And I think this is a, this is a pretty huge goodwill effort, because the budgets that we have passed have all been, you know, very reasonable. Right now, we have a budget without any of these facilities upgrades, and our per pupil spending is going up by $2. I mean, this is a flat to down budget really, in all reality. So I think the question is, is do we go for this? Did it just pass all the good money or do we go and put it into a financed properly, business as usual? Frankly, we're adding $100,000 instead of 1.425 to our, technically what the state would be picking up on our behalf? Neil?
Yeah, so to that point, Garrett, then I just want to make sure that I'm walking through Jamie's numbers and I understand what, what we're considering here. So in this scenario of two light, Jamie, I interpret this as, this would add, for next year's budget, we would add just over 89,000 to-
Correct. That would be admin fees and it's shown here in the revenue and assessment. So that would be the, the admin fees and a portion of that may be contingency that if we didn't need, would go back. And then the next year out, that dollar amount would be replaced by, I would suggest the 2% 10-year, because it would be the same dollar amount of a payment due to the savings.
So you think, so then the, you're saying that the out years would be approximately $90,000 payments?
Yeah, 80, I think it's 87. Hold on, let me grab it.
Jamie, why? I think it's 85,444. So why, why are you saying the 10-year and the 20-year, the payments are the same? Because they look like they're about half.
No, no. Hold on, let me, one second. Let me pull it up so we can look at it together. So, so here, oops, let me make it bigger. So here, after the $31,000 savings that comes off of the changes, right? The payment for 10 years at 2% would be 85,440. And then the payment for 20 years, and we're just using 4%, I know the rates are coming down a little bit right now. But if, just using 4%, because we use them on the rest of them, 20 years, the payment would be 45,670. That's after the annual savings.
Okay, so you are, so you obviously, I mean, this is just simple math, but you are saving a fairly substantial amount. If you go 20 in the four versus the 10 in the two, is there, is there an advantage to do the lease, Jamie, as far as like it does? They do protect your savings, don't they? Isn't that what I'm understanding? They guarantee the savings?
Well, yes, well, they would do it on either one, but the 10, they usually would guarantee savings for 10 years. In Vermont, you're allowed to do the 10-year lease, because it's a, it's an energy savings project that guarantees savings. But this also, this qualifies for the HUD, HUD? The special grant monies that are available right now at 2%. And you can pay it early. You don't have to, you can pay it off early. You know, if by some amazing means you have, you know, a surplus for some reason, you know, you can, you can redirect the money and pay it early.
So, so just to keep us on track then with what's on here, to your question, Neil, so that the things that are off is we dropped the LED lighting? That's why we're calling it option two light. Other than that, it's our previous option two, right?
Right. And as they go through this and, you know, firm up the numbers, if the LED lighting fit, even if a portion of it fit, if some of these numbers by chance come in lower than what's been projected here, then we could try to, you know, we could still try to address some of the lighting, but-
Jamie, on the lighting too, so I was, I was looking at option two in my spreadsheet versus I added in your option two light. And with the LED lighting, because of the, because of the fairly significant savings, it barely increases the annual cost. My-
On two, yeah. So the annual costs on two would be 95,702. At 10 years, 2%.
So versus 85, so we'd be adding 10 grand a year for all the LED lighting, okay? I mean, and then obviously the big thing that we're walking away from at this point is our option three, which really included the big, the big items there was, it was the roof. It was a solar away, which again, I think we were all kind of, you know, depending on how that worked out and the code updates. But that was another six, seven, eight, I mean, that was another million dollars, right? Which, if we go with option two light, we are definitely walking away with that. I guess I personally, if we're going to go with option two, it's only, I just feel like, you know, adding the LED lighting for the amount of, and I don't want to just be spending wildly here, but the fact that it's only 10 grand a year, and I believe the, I believe that the fossil fuel, I mean, sorry, the, the savings are fairly, are like really substantial. I think there's a lot of bang for your buck as far as our fossil fuel reduction. I think it's, so you're saying the LEDs are good?
Yeah, I, I just really want to be on record, like, if you look at what you have, this, what this board has done over the course of the last two or three years, is extremely responsible budgeting. You've deliberated in almost every session of acknowledged that the intent of the law to bring greater equity to school funding in the state of Vermont was admirable and that we were definitely going to be on the wrong end of that in terms of the overall effect of our, on our finances, but not like this. And that the fact that we're deciding whether or not to upgrade our lighting to LED, be more energy efficient and reduce our carbon footprint, and we're talking about punting that so that we can avoid having to answer to some, some committee that's going to decide whether or not our increases are justified?
So I just want to be clear here. I, I understand the anger, right? It's not just that we get reviewed by a committee, it's that the committee then would have the, that pass on the recommendation in the A, we would have the authority to remove our cap. So there's, there's, there's potential pain associated with this. And it's not, it would be one thing if I just said somebody was going to come in and review my budget and be like, shame, 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 you did a bad thing. But I don't, I mean, I want to be, be careful here, right? Because removing the cap really puts a lot of pain on Norwich taxpayers.
I think by, by doing this and financing it for 10 years at 2%, adding that, to your point, Jay, I don't, I don't think that's going to run us amok of, this legislature, like, there's no way that they can, you know, I, I think the only way that we run amok of the legislature is if we go balls to the wall and do the 1.425 million. Sorry for my language, but that, I think, is where it's going to be, you know. And again, I, right, I don't know, right? Like 2020 hindsight, we might be looking at this and be like, you were the greater fool for not going for that, because we're still at a 40% tax rate increase and they didn't do a thing. But at least, go ahead, Jay.
I was just going to say, so, so it still is a gamble. We're still assuming that if we, if we, if we play nice, that we will have some kind of say or that they won't remove the cap. And I really, given what's happened so far, have very little faith that, that even that will happen. So it's, so to me, it feels like, it feels like there's a risk either way. It's like we either, we risk the ability to do improvements that are not frivolous. It's like we either, we risk the ability to do improvements that are not frivolous, that really are important for the school, and that probably, you're right, won't be able to be funded later. And it, I don't know, it just, it just feels to me that we're, we're stepping out, we're considering curtailing our plans on the, on the hope that I feel has very little evidence that we'll have an impact that'll need folks to somehow change the law favorably for us. Sorry, I'll be quiet.
No, I have shared your, trust me, ever since Friday evening when this came in, I have woken up every morning way earlier than I should have thinking about this, and getting angry and stressed, and...
So I, I know it's getting late, I have two very quick comments and a question for Neil. My first comment is, there's a very small chance that at some point in time, some member of the legislature, or the agency, or this tax rate group could watch this meeting to think about our budget preparations. I would just say, you know, and when faced with uncertainty, like, simply you go back to first principles, and that's trying to do the right thing for our school district and kids. And so wherever we end up, like, the discussion has always been about what's the right investment for our students, not like, hey, you know, this is, how do we maximize the benefit?
Right.
Right, because we talked about the cap in the context of, can we make investments upfront that will lower the overall liability over time in line with what our students need in the environmental stewardship, that's in some of our strategic planning. Two, to the extent I'm a little frustrated is that my two major domains are education and healthcare. Vermont's healthcare system is extraordinarily challenged. And I have a great deal of respect for Vermont's policymakers. I used to work for the Joint Fiscal Office, Tax Department, the Agency of Public Services. Governor's office, like a bad penny goes from agency to agency. And I'm increasingly worried that the public policy discussion is about Vermont as policymakers wish it to be, not Vermont as it is, and with potentially dire consequences for healthcare institutions and educational school districts. I guess my question for Neil is, I cannot think of a single Vermonter that I know who is more well-versed and thoughtful about education issues. And you are the past president, I still believe, of the SBA. And so could you give us just briefly, like, some sense of where that group of thoughtful Vermonters is about where we are in this, particularly in the eye of this hurricane, and where we might be going? And to the extent that might help us make a final decision about our budget this evening? Just value your input.
Yeah, so we had a meeting last night to talk about this. Board of Directors, twenty-some-odd folks, offering their personal opinions and experiences in their school district. Everybody universally, along with New York, along with Norwich, supports the intent of one twenty-seven, right? I mean, there were kids in, in parts of the state that just weren't getting the services that they needed, and things weren't working. It needed to change. But there's a lot of folks that are in the same place that Norwich is, of grappling with tax rate increases, and they're worried that their budgets aren't going to pass. And so there is no, if you're asking if there is a single point of view on this whole thing, I would say the single point of view is frustration, anger, wanting to do the right thing, working in a system that is so convoluted that you can't, I can't even explain this to my wife, and I tried one night, in preparation to be able to do it in front of like a larger group of our public. I'm like, if I can't explain it to my wife, like, then, you know? And just, I mean, this whole thing is challenging. Those are the themes that I heard, not we're going to handle this this way and we're going to handle it that way. I do think that the path forward, at least from the discussion that I've heard tonight, is this compromise approach, where it's not the full one point four two five, it's this lesser number. I think in order to help us get to a place tonight of finality, I would need to know, with Jamie's assistance, some numbers. So if somebody were going to propose a budget number, and then what the language would need to be for a motion then for, because Jamie, I'm assuming there would be an additional warrant article then for some borrowing?
You don't have to if you go the lease, if you go the lease, the two percent lease option in Vermont, you don't have to do a separate warrant article. Oh, shoot, I just made my finger bleed again, just trying to... I took a digger the other day, that's why I've been out of the office. This is my face, like, off of the concrete where I fell. So anyway, I'm doing fine, but, so, so if you do the...
So it's just a revised budget number then?
Yes, yes, absolutely, Neil, and it would be this one right here, let me just pull that back up.
I mean, you know, but the, the other, I mean, so, okay, if we're not, if we're going to walk away from one point four two five, I guess the other, we could just finance this over ten years, it's going to add the, after the, you know, savings, eighty-five grand a year. That's obviously going to, you know, be above our cap amount, you know, well less than ten percent, you know, whatever it is, right? As far as the act, but the question is, do we, do we stack a few fixed costs in there? Do we add a fixed, you know, six hundred grand in there? Like, or do we really be good citizens and just finance it over ten years at two percent? And basically, we're only going to be, now we're adding eighty-five grand to a, for facilities, like, because that's all that's in our budget. I think it's also important, people are watching this after the fact, to understand that our entire budget, there is no facility cost in our budget, we have no debt right now, right? At the Marion Crosscoast, except for the playground...
We do, because the playground and the septic.
For the playground and the septic, but it's about a hundred thousand of interest payments, right? I think the payments on that, it's in the budget. It's a very small amount of debt, as far as like what we're carrying for facilities right now.
Yeah, I mean, I guess the only thing that I would say to that, like, this is all, it's a crap shoot. Like, what's the, what's the better answer here tonight? And I'm not sure that I know. What I will say is that I do think maybe showing a little restraint in what we're doing here gives us the opportunity to join with what I anticipate to be a whole host of other school districts across the state. They're going to say, we followed your request, we cut back on the spending, but damn, you better then show up for us legislature when it comes to construction aid.
Yeah.
Because that's really one of the key things that we're all experiencing here across the state is we need assistance with facilities updates. And if, if you're gonna, you know, if we took a step forward and met the request on this spending control related to Act one twenty-seven, then goddamn, I need you to step up and help us with construction aid.
Well, I think, I agree with that, but with Rebecca and I think, if, if they don't recast the waiting system, like, the fact that our tax rate went up thirty, even if with the construction aid and even all this other stuff going, that's the problem with doing all this stuff, is we're just going to be paying, this is just going to be stacked on top of the thirty-six or forty percent. It's somewhere between thirty and forty percent tax rate increase. Every, that, that's a flat budget from last year. So, again, when we went from twenty-nine to thirty-three percent, it was because I'm using this year's budget. So, we're already sitting, like, this Act one twenty-seven is costing us a tax rate increase of somewhere between thirty and forty percent before you add any other annual budgets to it, annual increases to cost of teachers and healthcare and facilities. So unfortunately, like, I don't even, but is the legislature going to actually recast that and actually help take that forty percent increase down? Because at the end of the day, guys, like, I don't know about you, but you can live in a million and a half dollar house in Norwich, but you're not, who's going to pay forty-five thousand dollars in taxes to live in Norwich in it? Even, even if you have tons of money, it just makes no sense.
Yeah, I, I, just quickly, and we're going to have to make a decision tonight, not knowing the answer to those questions.
Right. So my, my request would be, and I've heard everything you say, Garrett, and I don't disagree with it, but my request at this point in time, so we can move forward with the other two projects, because they're all intertwined together, would be for, for this board to embark on the scenario two light with a two percent ten-year lease. We can always look, again, we will know more within the next four months than we know now, right? And knock on wood, you know, we're doing okay in the other areas. And if there is any other grant monies that come available, or if we can save money in some of our other projects, then we might be able to phase in some of the lighting with the amount of money that we've already got budgeted.
I mean, with three kids that are all their teenage years, I guess the extra ten grand a year to approve the LED lighting, and the fact that it's going to rain again this weekend and no one can ski, I guess is like, I would like, it would make me feel better as a human to put the LED lighting on top of this for extra ten grand a year.
I'm with you.
But, again, I hear you, Jamie, that we can obviously kick the can down the road. I just do think that that's like, I mean, that seems like it's a huge bang for the buck as far as energy savings. So I think what we're, yeah, anyways, I don't want to add more to our budget, but apart from me, it's just like, that does not seem like a huge increase given the savings, and...
I'm still not there. I, I guess, I guess, given that the legislature apparently didn't see this whole thing coming, despite years of planning and implementing Act one twenty-seven, makes me think that smarter brains may not prevail in the next few years either, and we should get all the, getting as good and continue with our budget, which has now been justified in myriad, myriad different ways. These are necessary improvements.
You mean for the one point four two five?
For the one point four, yeah. I don't, I don't see any reason to back down, although I know that Neil feels that we should capitulate.
Neil? Just to clarify, I understand where you're coming from. I don't see this capitulation, I see it as, I don't want to be the person, the group, that rubbed it in the face at the legislature, caused them to remove the five percent cap provision in Norwich, and have our tax rate go up by forty percent in one year. I can't, I honestly, I can't stomach that for my own community. Like, I can't see, I, I would feel terrible if that happened.
So I, I have one question then, as a follow-up to that, and then one comment. Jamie? And I can't see you because I'm not on Zoom here.
I think if you go like this...
Are you out there? I love the Dream of Jamie reference.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, I am, I had my mute on, yep.
Jamie, I, you know, I'm very much where Lily is, but I, I do know how much you and Tony spend time thinking about our facilities work. Are you okay with the light view or not? The light option, rather.
I'm always okay with whatever we can get. Tony probably would say no, he would rather have what we were going to do. But I understand the political pressures that you all are under, and I think that the light version will allow us to move forward with the other two projects because they're all hooked together. You know, so, I'm okay with either one, but I, I understand where you're at. Understand what's at stake, I guess. And, and in dealing with the legislature and seeing all of the emails going back and forth with everybody, I understand why Neil is concerned.
Separate, a comment that is about legislative strategy has been some time since I spent every day all winter in the legislature. I used to get to do that, though I still spend some time in government relations role in healthcare. I've not been up there this year, but I have to believe that the temperature is very, very hot on this issue. I would be nervous sitting in the chair as a town situated like Norbit, Norwich, and like, what kind of questions you might get, and being forced to defend all manner of stuff that's like outside the purview. I'll leave it to others, but very thoughtful written testimony might be a way to go, because I just think it's going to be a hard, I don't know, other people have probably been watching testimony other than me, but I just would be nervous that Norwich would be posterized or dragged in directions that would be deeply unfair to the work that this board has done. And when you're in there, it's their room, like, arguing with them is inadvisable. And I say this as someone who was once sent to talk about reducing the earned income tax credit. Boy, that was a fun day at the office, thanks Peter Shumlin, right? Oh, boy, like, have better mornings. So, I just, just as people want us to testify, I think we should be, we should contribute. We should do so carefully, if we can, right? So, it's just a piece of editorial commentary, do with it what you like.
You mean testify?
The offer written testimony as opposed to...
For Thursday.
For being dragged. I mean, there are other people who are more connected to this, like Neil, I just get nervous. I sort of love the extemporaneous back and forth, but you don't, you want to be turned into a pincushion during the hottest moment of this discussion. All right, so where are we at? Decision time?
I sent both of the numbers to Neil via chat. I can send them to anybody, but I sent them to Neil because he asked me the question.
Well, so there's two numbers. I am going to make a motion for the lower number, which does not include the LED lighting. To approve...
Can, can you tell us what the two numbers are? Sorry.
Uh, yeah, it's seven million nine hundred and twenty-eight thousand nine hundred and forty-three dollars without the lights, seven million nine hundred and forty-six thousand eight hundred and thirty-five dollars with the lights.
But those, both of those are the light version.
Scenario, yeah, scenario with two lights.
Light without the light?
It's a light version with lights, like, which is...
Does not include the roof and the solar.
Yeah, it's not the one point four two five that was previously contemplated.
Well, don't forget, the one point two four two five, because the, the option three was actually two and a half total, right?
Right.
Because the one point four two five is, we're going to only go handle, it was basically going to handle option two up front, and then it was going to option, then it was going to do the rest for option three, which we were going to do decent anyways.
Right.
We were just going to cover the first half of it with the one point four two five.
Right.
So Jamie, the, the one between the LEDs and the other one is ten grand, is that what the difference is?
It's, no, it's seven million nine forty-six eight thirty-five, hold on, seven nine four six eight thirty-five, minus seven nine two eight nine forty-three, seventeen thousand eight hundred and ninety-two.
So it's seventeen thousand eight hundred and ninety-two dollars more to add the LED lights, but we, we...
For a year.
That is, that, that doesn't include the offset, the electrical offset, correct? Like, the savings?
Right, so the, the first year would be...
Okay.
The first two...
Can we remember what the savings were if we did the LED lights?
Yeah, it's eighteen thousand dollars a year, so that your payment the next year out, the... The difference in the payment would drop by ten thousand.
I mean, you've just, you've paid for it, basically, is what you're saying, Jamie?
In the first year, it's the eighteen thousand of the difference. And then the, the payment difference between the two scenarios is ten grand a year.
Okay, thank you.
Part of this, these things are only getting more expensive, like, well, I guess I do that.
Sorry, so there was a motion on the table?
No, I never made a motion.
Yeah.
I was about to make a motion and there was further discussion, so you all are free to make a motion at this point in time, if somebody wants to.
I'll make a motion, but I don't have anything as part of me.
Hold on, hold on, I'm just going to, okay, you're not online, you're not on the Zoom.
No, I'm sorry, I, I came straight from your port.
That's all right.
Never mind, I, I can sense the mood in the room. Move to approve the twenty-four, twenty-five Norwich School District budget in the amount of seven million nine hundred and forty-six thousand eight hundred and thirty-five dollars.
I will second that.
For all of those that weren't paying attention, that includes the lights.
We got it, Neil, thank you. We got it, Neil, thank you.
It's light with light.
It's light with the lights. All those in favor? All those opposed?
Neil and Garrett, you can tell them that you dragged your board towards fiscal responsibility. I, I hope you are correct that that buys goodwill.
Me too.
Now that the board has made that decision, despite voting with the minority, whatever I can do to help in that conversation, I will of course do.
Yep, well, I appreciate the conversation. Like I said, I have flip-flopped back and forth for the past four days, and I have done nothing but look at these spreadsheet numbers, trying to figure out what has gone so wrong, but...
You, you all have joined me for the hardest decision I think that I've ever had to make in the entire time that I've been doing this. And to be clear, like, it doesn't get any easier after tonight.
No, it's going to get worse.
No, and Garrett, my only other comment I know we're still on the record is, if I tickle the recesses of my brain, one of the first things that I was taught when I worked for Vermont's Tax Reform Commission is, going back to Morse Giuliani and the foundation formula, that the shelf life of an education finance system in Vermont is a limited number of years. Then it breaks and something changes.
Focus less than one.
And so, this, this, just the stakes, feels like everybody has pushed all their chips in the middle of the table on this one.
Right.
The stakes feel much, much higher. But the underlying problem of how to make it sustainable and economically viable and fair, while we have a 60-year track record of not, that's a hard, hard problem.
And, and in our defense, we're not the only state that hasn't figured this out, so...
Reddick, we are part of the Dresden Interstate Compact, and I start to wonder at some point, as the laws and the funding systems in the two states diverge more and more over time, does it make sense to consider one Dresden again and becoming non-operating and building schools that are energy efficient and state-of-the-art on the New Hampshire side of the river that all of our kids tuition for?
And these are all discussions that I think that we need to have another evening when it's not 9:30. I mean, I think it's a great one, right? But there's a whole host of things that go along with that. Essentially, what you were just asking us all is if we would be willing to step down from the school board, right? Because when you're running a non-operating district, there's not a whole lot of stuff that that board needs to do.
Marion Crossco, a great, a premier childcare facility and preschool on the Vermont side.
I do think, though...
Revenue generator.
I appreciated Jay's comments in that it does feel like an existential conversation for our school. And I know there are other towns in Vermont that have had existential conversations about their school. It just feels strange to have that conversation from a position of academic strength as opposed to a position of weakness and failing in the, in the school.
It's good, it's good, yes, I mean, it's going on just 10 miles up the road.
Yep.
Right?
Well, the problem, I keep saying this, I mean, that's why I was drawing these numbers, and again, I've woken up every day this weekend early, because it doesn't matter how much money you have, but when you're getting these tax rate increases of 10,000, you know, when you start paying these type of taxes...
Yeah.
And the difference between what, because Hanover is already very high taxes for what, you know, I talked to my friends who live in Massachusetts and what they pay for property taxes, I mean, it's nowhere near this. And now we're going, literally, we're going to be 40% higher, because right now, we're on par with Hanover, just so we're clear. I looked at the grant list, they just did a, they just had a reassessment done, I looked at what I think houses are comparable for, for a few houses, again, it was just my data, but our tax rate literally is going to be about 40% more. It's, it's, right now, we're on par, we're all pretty even, I think, if you're to look at the data that I pulled over the weekend.
Except for the lack of state income tax.
Except for the property data, and that, it's been like this for the past 10 years, I think. It's been pretty even across both sides of the river. This Act 127 just pushed us, and it's this, this, it's this one-time bump, and I guess this is where it's hard for the legislators, because it seems like, I'm not sure if people really care. I think they just think that it's a bunch of wealthy people and they can just keep paying more in taxes, and I keep, I mean, I, I've read the news, and people are saying that, no, no one's going to leave this state, they always say they do what they never do. I do think that Norwich, like, I'm scared for the future of Norwich with these taxes. I don't think it's sustainable.
One quick question, do we have need to enter into executive session, Mr. Chairman?
Sorry, no, I should, everyone wants to see a house, we should get back to the...
I was happy to keep chatting, but we're on the record.
Exactly. So, no, we don't have a need to enter into executive session. Sorry, I moved my agendas around here. Not that I'm aware of, but this, so, we returned our, okay, so, yeah, we have a motion to adjourn.
A move that we adjourn at 9:36 PM.
Second? Lisa?
I'll be consistent.
Who was in favor? It's unanimous. Did that was unanimous.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
That was hard.